The Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning. There's an annual, should I read it?
Yeah, that one you can read.
Save the date, CFPZA Annual Conference, March 27, 2025. Please consider attending this year's annual conference for the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies. Scheduled to take place at 5:00 PM on Thursday, March 27, 2025, at the AquaTurf, Southington, Connecticut. Tonight is sure to be both enjoyable and informative. The Honorable Marshall K. Berger will be this year's keynote speaker. A retired Superior Court Judge, Marshall Berger, established and presided over the land use docket, a specialized Superior Court assignment that focused exclusively on land use and environmental cases for nearly a decade. Additionally, he taught land use law as an adjunct professor at the UConn School of Law. Judge Berger is widely respected and admired for his knowledge and expertise in land use matters. This year's topic will be affordable housing appeals as governed by Connecticut general statutes. Many land use commissions have been informed by developers that unless their application for housing is approved, an affordable housing application will be submitted. The legal implications of an affordable housing application on a land use commission's discretion, as well as the likely outcome of an appeal to the Superior Court, will be addressed by our speaker. While the affordable housing appeal process has been in existence for over 30 years, there are still questions regarding its effect on the land use process. As you may already be aware, Public Act 21-29 now requires an educational component for all land use commission members. At a cost only $70 per individual, this conference is a cost-effective way to complete one hour of education while providing an opportunity to socialize with commission members from other towns. In addition, length of service awards will be presented to commission members who have served in any capacity for 12 or 25 years. If you have a commission member who is eligible for this recognition, please submit his or her name. Nomination forms will be included in the registration packet that will be sent to your commission in the com-
We don't see it until there's an application for the use of that property.
And then, I guess, I'm wondering, maybe this encompasses what you were just saying. Is the e-commerce drive, like, my understanding was that we were supposed to get that road through the Tawonik Power Plan Agreement, and that was going to generate revenue from these lots that were being sold. Are there issues with these lots? Because a lot, three, at least three out of 10 of them are being sold as sell-offs.
We don't have no idea-
You don't have any deal, okay.
... with the pricing of the lots.
Okay, okay. So, tomorrow night, there's a town meeting for the sale of Lot 1, and I just want to ask, would you be the board to address the question regarding the size of the lot that's for sale? Because it differs from what's being stated in the town meeting and what is stated in the map on the website.
We don't sell.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right. And I guess tomorrow night would be my questions. Great, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Hearing non-moving forward. Okay. First item of business is Z-25-002, 360 Center Rock Green. I believe the applicant is here to answer any questions that people have. Just to bring everybody up to speed, the applicant is for change of use, from one allowed use in that zone to another allowed use in that zone. There were some questions that people had about parking, I believe. Mr. Haynes is here to answer any of our questions at this time.
Tom, thank you for coming out, appreciate it. Obviously, no small ask, it's late.
Got it.
I guess, just, I do have a couple of questions, but just in general, what's the goal here? I think we all understand generally, but would love to hear you. Just quickly tell us what's going on.
So, simply, is that through a couple lease expirations and also relocation, that second floor of what we call the end building, which is really above the Sitting Duck and all the way down to the Ice Cream, was all offices. And the major office person more to say, we expanded her and moved her into another building. So, we're finding that it's probably going to be a lot easier for us to use that building for residential on the second floor. And our plan is to do somewhat smaller apartments, they're ones, mostly all one bedrooms than what we have in the big apartment buildings, and try to make them a bit more affordable. So, that's, that's the plan. I know there's a question that always comes up about parking, but residential use is much less than the commercial use.
Got it.
Twenty-four units. That commercial use had many more parking uses than a one per apartment.
So, with regards to the parking, I guess, the intent is to have them try to focus their, their general parking in the back. I guess, is there any plans to dedicate that parking? Or is it going to be just open to kind of first come, first served?
So, right now, we're going to play by ear, but there's a, the way it's segregated in the back, there's about 100 and maybe some, a little over 100 parking spots in the back. And there's a small parking lot that doesn't really get used, which is about, I think, 22 spots right adjacent to that. So, we're going to segregate that off right now and say that's apartment, apartment parking. And we have some available spots inside the garage that isn't full, so we're going to offer that also.
Awesome. I think that was all, I think it's a great plan. I mean, I know Oxford needs housing, especially this type, right?
Right.
Where maybe they're not looking for a single-family home to own, but looking for it.
Right.
So, I appreciate you coming in and answering those questions.
Well, you know, our, our original plan was to stay with where we are with the small offices, but, you know, this is kind of what we're finding is an opportunity based upon, you know, the need that, you know, as we all know, office space is not the most highly sought-after use right now out in the commercial industry. So, we're going to try to flip that and fill the need that's out there.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Pete.
How you doing, Tom?
As far as the apartments go, you just said affordable. Are you going to put them up as affordable apartments?
No. We actually explored that, but because this building is part of the big commercial part of the project, it's so complicated with its financing that the state would not entertain using some of those as affordable.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
In the parking lot, you're talking in the back, that's near Boulder, I think it's called Boulder Boulevard?
So, you still get at it from behind, coming through the main entrance or off of the residential, but it's that, that small parking lot that you'll see almost nobody in it, which is really, that long, narrow parking lot behind that office building has a small parking lot that people are one step further, closer to that, yeah, Boulder Pass, yes.
Anyone else?
Just to clarify, you mentioned there's going to be designated spots for the residents, correct?
Yep.
Will they have the ability to park in the general parking spaces, meaning in front of the commercial buildings like Sitting Duck or Car and Lemon and what have you? It says certain points of the day, that is very crowded, it is difficult to find spots. Will they be allowed to park there as well? Will that be policed at all?
Well, we'll police as best we can, but no, no.
How you doing?
Good.
The people who park behind that building, right behind the whole road?
Yep.
Are those employees of all the shops?
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
And the offices upstairs.
How many offices should be occupied?
Let's see. More to say. So, yeah.
I noticed that that, that road is full. I was wondering, I knew that there had people parked in the parking, just what was upstairs? Office spaces above, because of all the residents, the workers, the cops, they had parked in the back.
They parked in the back.
Well, yeah, but again, that small parking lot that I'm talking about, it's almost always empty. You guys notice it, when that's farther out, there's a dumpster in there, not in that long parking lot that you-
Hey. Yes. Yep. Yeah, it's built perfect for this. It's got elevated two entrances, center hall corridor, yeah. Yes. Yep. There will be a front entrance to the residence. So, we will still have that entrance that cuts, that cuts the back. That's our intention now. We thought about getting rid of the front entrance on the green, back one.
One of the shops. One. 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 The Boulder, right, there's a big Boulder out there. That's Boulder. Yes. Big rock someplace in there, too. What I'm talking about is, there's like a field, I think it's here, there's a big rock there.
We have this, this big rock field that's right up here. There's no building there, there's the, that's the gravel. That guy right there?
Yeah.
Have to look out for it, because, I mean, I think about the big one that's like at the-
Yeah, that's at the entrance.
I think at the sign.
You can turn into parking. All right, they won't live there.
I think, too, everybody wants this parking up front, like, it's, you know, tons of parking all up here that they ignore, and tons of parking in here that they ignore.
If you go by, you almost never see cars there, that's why you almost don't even know that little parking lot.
Do you have any intentions of doing apartments above the other building across the line?
Yeah. So, you're thinking one of the smaller lots that are over there, if you remove one of the smaller ones? Across. That's false. That's false. That's false. No, I didn't have no- No. So, there's a building that is going to go right here, that's the gravel parking lot, which was the location of the YMCA that we could ever get to. Right in here next to the Ice Cream?
Yeah, we're all building start out. So, originally, it's going to be a large, YMCA, we're going to break it down. Parking set 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 down.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming in, we really appreciate it.
Do we need to approve this?
No, it's, it's a change of use. It's handled administratively. New business, Z-25-007, 105 Wilin Brock Road, owner role of Bearing Company of America, Chair Bob Crawford, One True Tripology Center, Oxford, Connecticut. Applicant Borgesi Building and Engineering, Chair of Robert Blanchett, 2155 East Main Street, Torrington. Application Building C Site Plan, 1,022 square foot addition to originally approved site plan, refer to planning and zoning engineer for review.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Kyle Blanchett, coming to you on behalf of Borgesi Building, based on a Torrington, Connecticut, representing RBC for the property located at 105 Wilin Brock Road in Oxford. This property has been previously approved last year for 31,250 square foot addition on the southerly side. They are looking to relocate their existing Fairfield plant to Oxford, and that's what this addition is for.
Pete, I'm sorry.
In doing so, they need compressors to run the machines, and that's what this addition we're looking to do. We're here tonight to seek approval for an additional 1,722 square foot extension on the rear of the building. This does not affect any of the previously approved building or parking that we have, and there is no run-in with wetlands or any issues. Anybody have any questions?
This is just for the compressor room itself, the 17.
Correct, that's the-
Right.
Not your typical garage-sized compressors, they're, they're, they're large. I don't know if the total number, do you happen to know? Three, three in total.
On here, I do see the proposed compressor room. Your statement of use talks about that additional parking paving, but I also see a proposed addition of 31,250 square feet. What is the other proposed addition in relation to?
To move their Fairfield branch to Oxford and relocate all the equipment in that facility to this facility.
Is that already completed, or is that another?
That has already been approved, previously approved by-
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, you're going to have proper ventilation, HVAC and everything to take care of that.
Anyone else have any questions?
One quick, one, two. Was there any secondary containment required for the compressors? I'm assuming they're running-
I'm sorry.
Is, is there any, like, oil lubrication required for these compressors? What are they running off of? Are they purely electric-driven compressors?
I believe they're all electric-driven, yeah, they're all electric-driven screw compressors.
Got it.
Electric-driven operated.
Never mind that. Good, I'm good.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any more questions? We're all set then, thank you. Okay, next item is zoning enforcement. This, we got three things listed here. We got three approved use permits. Yeah.
Sixty-five is a, is a sign company.
Okay. Okay. Which-
Right next to Buddy's, Buddy's. Right next to Guy's.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, that's, Buddy doesn't own that building.
Um, Seattle?
Yeah, I own it, yeah.
Seattle.
Yeah.
So, credit me. Yes.
Well, the container, I assumed, was as a result of the flood, and that's going to be going away.
Yeah, people take care of that.
Okay. Okay. Because I think they're coming in for a new sign, right? A multiple. Right. And again, just one, one sign on the property, just a reminder. No invoices? Any other business the commission deems necessary for discussion? Does anyone have anything that they?
One question.
Sure.
That building on 67 across the street from the liquor store, we went there a couple years back, and the guy had containers, five barrels of oil stacked outside, remember? He has the pine trees in front of his house? On 67?
Across from Spirits or 67.
That house, that guy there, remember?
Back at the junkyard there.
Yeah, well, now you got worse, you got cars out there now, and he's got.
So we add him to the commitment, I can, I'll send him to the.
He's getting closer to the road now. Now he's got cars parked there and a machine. Thanks.
Is there anything else? Anyone have anything else?
Uh, one really quick comment, I guess, is how do we make notice that we want to?
Tell Jessica.
Everyone dressed to the nines, but like. We should go in full tuxedo this year, is that what you're saying?
Well, you weren't here the day we had the party bus, we all went on the party bus.
I like that idea.
I knew that was true. One of our commissioners had a, had a party bus.
Oh, good.
So he, he drove us all there.
I like that idea.
The chair. The nice dinner.
Twist, twist it, Sarah's one. Might give you a free pen this year.
See, they got. You can see all your old buddies from Huggers. Did they?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, yes, opposed, staying motion carries. Thank you, everyone.